Seven o'clock.
So, welcome to our bi-weekly study session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the study session. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Our first topic for today's, this evening's study session is the quarterly report from Leavenworth Unified School District 453 School Superintendent Dr. Mike Roth.
How are you doing?
Good. Good evening, everyone. It seems like I was just here.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Always enjoy the opportunity to address the mission. Here's our newest Pride magazine. Some of you may have already seen it. Couple of things to kind of look through to just kind of bring, bring the commission up to date on. If you turn to, I think it's page three, on the first day of school, one of the things that I think is really, without a lack of a better term, cool is that we had the military come and greet our students. Greet our students and really did a, had a huge impact, not only on our students but on our staff as well. And it's one of the things that was really talked about as a positive of beginning the school year. And so, we were excited to have that, just to kind of give a little bit of an update on our bond. If you kind of turn toward the back, you can see some of the progress. Those are some pictures that were early August. There's been a lot of progress since then on the new, on the new facility. What's been, the brick is going up on the outside, sheet rock's going up on the inside. The precast walls for our new storm shelter, part of that building which is the gym, they were going up yesterday and today. So, the footprint of the building is almost complete once they get that gym, the precast walls up on the gym. That building, the footprint of it, from the proximity side was, is about 98 percent. They will build the locker rooms on the west side of that. And you'll start seeing them do some of the site work. They're working on it now. They have a meeting Thursday in my office with all of the contractors, subcontractors to start planning the, all of the sidewalks and driveways and cement part around the building. So, it's really starting to take shape. So, it's actually, it's pretty impressive on the inside. Can't wait to give the grand tour to everyone. If you'll turn to the next page, one of the things I'm really excited about is our new Early Educational Center, which is up on the northeast side of town in our Lawson facility. That gives a rendering of what we're anticipating it to look like. If you notice on the outside of that, all of that outdoor education play area, and so, a lot of the curricular things with kindergarten and preschool and even early, early education is that socialization, that, that ability to play, to explore. But with that, we have a lot of education built into that outside area. And so, it's kind of like an external classroom to the inside, and it's going to be very unique. And it's going to be something that I think will be a, a great opening to our school district from the perspective of K through 12. Right below that, I know the, the commission has seen this prior too, but just that's our new elementary boundaries. The purple will be David Brewer. The green will be Anthony Elementary. And then, kind of the tannish brown will be Henry Leavenworth. And Henry Leavenworth's boundary did not change. David Brewer extended kind of to the, a little bit to the south and to the east. And then Anthony picked up everything else north of what they normally had. So, with that, we've been visiting with our, our bus company. And one of the things I know that this, that this commission had questions on early on and all the bond discussion was our transportation and how we were doing that. So, we're in the midst of working with Easton Bus to create a transportation plan for our students, particularly students that may have been displaced from boundary changes and, and building changes. So, hoping to have a preliminary plan to my school board at the November, as early as November, or for sure by December, so it can be published and have input from the community and then have a final approval, but later than February, on the expanded transportation that we would be looking at. And so, excited about that process. And then, the last thing that I have for you before any questions is just to, I know that the commission is interested in school numbers. And so, our total enrollment this year is 3,680, or actually, student-wise headcount is 3,793 students. FTE, which kindergarten, you know, there's always a different calculation with kindergarten, FTEs, with virtual school, because some of those could be part-time students. And then, we also have students that come into our district for, they maybe homeschool that come in for particular classes or something like that. We get to count that. So, that's why the FTE is kind of an odd number, is 3,686.6, which we're down about 65 kids. And so, we did the enrollment projection. We had to study when we looked at the boundary to help us not only look at the boundary but looking at transportation needs across the district. And so, those, those projections correspond with what we're seeing now. And so, I think our projections for future years is to come up a little bit and dip a little bit more again and then kind of come up and stay flat. And so, this was what was projected last fall and, or a year ago, I guess, yeah, a year ago, well, February, it was projected, February, kind of what our enrollment would look like, and it's holding pretty true. So, oh, one other thing, the homecoming parade downtown. I can't, I can't thank the city commission enough and Paul, working with us and the police chief and all of his personnel and everybody in the city. The downtown parade is, is really starting to come together and, and really be nice. Lots of compliments throughout. And so, just want to thank you all again for allowing us to have that opportunity.
That's great.
I think your turnout this year was a little larger than the past year.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're seeing is each year, you know, we try to work our school schedule to give more flexibility for more kids and, you know, kind of in a more safe manner with their parents and things. And really have been very pleased with the turnout that we've had. Each year, it seems like we get more people wanting to enter a flow from the high school from, you know, each school has a flow entry, but even our high school clubs and stuff are starting to get more involved and, and that's what it's all about.
Right. When is the intermediate school going to be open for the 2021?
So, the, we're still on track and we'll know for sure after Thursday, once all the subs get together and actually still plan out. But we're still on track for a March 1st occupancy. And so, what that will do is give us time from really about that March 1st into February through the end of spring break to get all of our furniture situated, to get everything. And then, we'll do a soft opening with our sixth grade coming over the last nine weeks.
Okay.
Won't change like parent drop-off or pickup. They'll just enter the same way and we'll take them across the bridge at that time. And just to get a feel of the building, see what, if there's any tweaks or things that need to be done at that time.
And the map you discussed, it does take effect for the 2021 school year for the elementary schools?
Yes.
And so, the Early Education Center won't be open though until, they'll need to work on that, right?
Right. So, the, so, we're in the 1920 school year, it'll be closed, the 2021, and then it'll open 2122.
Okay. Makes sense. I did have a question in, on a, on a grant. I heard about this from Dr. Ms. Pagel. Just through the Department of Defense Educational Activity, did, did the school district get a grant for advanced via individual determination program or?
Yeah, the Avid Grants. We actually have received two grants over the last couple of years. Each one of them have been about a half a million dollars. And so, we've, we, we feel very fortunate to have that. We have different programs attached to that.
Yeah.
And they've been going very well.
And that's essentially a program that, I don't think it's just for the state or this region, it's across the United States, isn't it?
It's a DDA grant, right?
Yeah, right.
Department of Defense grant.
So, it focuses on skills for college.
Right. So, we have a couple of different grants. One is the skills for college. And then, the other is the opportunity to work with students that kind of transient nature. So, like military students that have a lot of schools, so additional, additional help opportunities for all students. But it's more of a kind of working with students that have had a lot of transitions within their life.
Okay. And this is the second?
That's the second year, this, this would be, so, this would be the third year for the first part of it.
Okay.
And then, we were awarded a grant last year, so this will be the second year of that one, which that was more focused on college and career readiness.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Any other questions or comments?
No, no, it sounds like everything is on track. It looks good.
Thank you very much, Dr. Roth, for coming by. And have a good rest of the fall.
Yes. Do you want?
Yeah, just hang out for a minute.
Yeah.
Next time.
We're not through anything yet.
That's right. The next, next-gen item is review and update of the USD 453 property proposal.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, and Commission, I'd hope to have a more comprehensive update tonight on this issue, but because it was a public issue, because we've talked about it before, I thought it important just to give an update of where we are. The big thing we're waiting on right now is 10th Avenue Park was land purchased by the city from a state program that administered federal funds. So, we've been in good contact with the state. I included our contact at the state, Katie Westerhouse, with the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks. We've submitted all of the documentation related to the park, related to the, the potential area of the land swap, what would happen. She's submitted that to the National Park Service, who then has to sort of go through their process to go back to the state and back to us. And that's where we are right now. As you know, with, you know, dealing with city bureaucracy is one thing, but state bureaucracy, now federal too. So, that's what we're doing. In the meantime, we haven't been stagnant. The superintendent and I have met about this and discussed it and continue to work. I've met with LSA, both the president and a representative, Mr. Greg Griff Jr., and then Mr. Griff Martin came in and met with me. I relayed some of their concerns to Dr. Roth. I think we're in a really good position. LSA's been really good to work with. I think we're looking at it as an improvement of the overall community offerings for athletics and for youth opportunities. School district, LSA, city, all working together. So, we don't have, I don't have much more to report tonight, other than the fact that we hope to get something back from the Federal Park Service in the next couple of weeks so that we could bring something back to you. I did invite LSA here today, the representatives. I did get an email saying that they were coaching soccer practice tonight and they were going to try to make it, but you know, that, that's how it goes when you're involved in those organizations. So, I told them I would get them a readout of what we talked about tonight, but did indicate to them that just a general update to the commission, to the public, that we have been meeting all the groups and it's been positive, and we're still waiting on some paperwork from the state and federal governments. So, I don't know, Mike, if you wanted to add anything to that.
I agree.
And we're trying to let the school board know that we are working toward it, so we're not, we're not halting anything or anything. We're just trying to get everything in place. We've sent all the stuff from the 1990 project we did when we got the football stadium for the land north of Gatewood to the state to kind of show them, to see if we could do the same process. So, I believe we've done what we can thus far and we're just waiting on a response.
Good. I saw Greg last night and he said he didn't think he could make it tonight, but.
Yeah.
He's, he's coaching, so.
It's about the same thing we ran into with Roy Miller Park.
With the VA, yeah.
With the VA, because that also goes through the same agents.
Right. And the good thing about this one is we've done it before and we already have the identified, potential identified swap-out. And so, I think hopefully it's just a matter of the federal government getting to it. If we wait another couple of weeks, I may reach out to our federal delegation. I might want to give the agencies time to respond on their own. I don't believe that they've been dragging their feet, but we will do that if we get a little bit farther down the road.
Yeah. It'd be good to get it behind us, done in behind us.
So, the next time that this particular topic comes to the commission, will it be another study session or do you think it'll be, you know, actual meeting or?
I don't foresee bringing it back. It's a good question. We'll see what the Federal Park Service comes back with, but we probably would need it one more time on a study session consensus to bring back into agreement, but we would probably be working on an agreement in the meantime. That, that would be what I would foresee.
That sounds good.
And probably Greg Roth and any other representatives from LSA, would, would they be able to attend that?
I would certainly attempt to, yeah, just like, yeah.
Just the whole parties or?
Or at least if they can provide some sort of written, so that, yeah. So, but they've been, they've been very good to work with.
Is, is the land, not the land used, the land volume about the same as David Brewer?
It's not quite the same, but the, the statutory language is comparable for the use. And if you look at a recreational use, it's not just the, the area that would be used for soccer, but there's a tennis court on it, sand volleyball court, bathroom. So, I think, I think we're, we're good in that situation as far as the recreational opportunities probably being a little more superior at Brewer Park.
Yeah.
So, but it doesn't require an acre-for-acre type thing.
So, you're saying I need to renegotiate?
Yeah, yeah. You got, maybe a little more leverage. So, I'll provide an update as soon as I hear something.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess that was, that's a pretty easy one.
Yeah, that's really easy.
Thanks, Paul. Any other questions or comments on this particular topic?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roth.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr.
Oh, by the way, that, the football team looked, they didn't win on Friday, did they? But they, they looked, they looked, they looked good though, and I thought the band was, I thought the band was great as, as always. Bruno Mars medley or something, it was really, really good. So, I meant to say that while you were here, but really, really good, so. Thank you. Next topic is the review snow and ice policy.
It is that time. I know it's just started to turn cold, but our annual review of the snow and ice policy, we have our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald, and he has a support staff here too as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is our annual review of our snow and ice policy plan. We review it internally to see if there's things that we've learned over the last year that we should make adjustments for. We identified most of them and they're all minor, do not fundamentally change what we do.
Okay.
And we've provided you a copy of this plan, which is truly a draft version, depending on if there's any changes we need to make that are identified this evening. And if there are, we'll, we'll get you.
Well, since we're just now seeing it, I don't know if we can.
Well, it's.
There was a review of, I think, the major, the major changes.
Yeah, just the, just the changes.
Yeah, just the changes. The, the changes are kind of moving with the times and things like clarified the, if we're going to make notifications, we really need to involve the public information officer and identify or clarify that if we're going to plow your street, our expectation is it'll get plowed once each way and then we'll go, we'll eventually get back to it, but it's not just one pass up and then we're done. It should have two passes. Dixon Street is a really sharp, nasty little corner and an odd corner of our community. We've had the neighbors complain that we don't do a good job of plowing that and people think they can drive down it even with a nice big truck. And all they do is slide off and end up in homeowner's driveway, which really annoys them because then he can't get out. So, we have added that to the list of streets that could be subject to closure. We've been actually closing it the last two or three years with, but we probably have to put it in writing. Cleaned up some language related to calibrating our spreaders. We've added a couple of streets to, if we get into downtown snow pickup and haul-off, which is the 300 and 400 blocks of Seneca due to 400 block being in front of City Hall, we would pack the snow up and haul it off. In the 300 block, there's a lot of people in the school district and there's at least one business down there now that has on-street parking that, and we think it falls into the category of what we ought to be hauling the snow off, so we've, we've added that. And as long as we're making changes, we, instead of just listing the schools that we're going to plow snow around, we added actual street names around the schools. It's a nice bureaucratic touch. And I think the big one was, for some reason, one of the kind of decision tables in here showed that we would plow snow when it had snowed a half an inch. We said, we've never plowed snow when there's a half an inch. So, we changed that to our functional operating policy of two inches unless we decide to plow earlier for some reason. But that was pointed out to us, I think, by one of the citizens that says half inch, what's the story? And so, we probably ought to clean that up. So, that's, that's kind of the, tending to the details thing, but the snow plan is basically the same. We have, we have several trucks. Typically, we have, we have two of these smaller trucks and two larger trucks. We have, we were using salt and calcium chloride to plow, to treat snow and ice. We have a fairly robust communication between ourselves, the city and the county, the Ford and the school district. There is old series of parking lots that we identify that are city parking lots that we will, we will plow. And essentially, if we get into a storm environment, we go 12 hours on and 12 hours off. Rarely do we go longer than three days, it's just not the nature of our storms. And cleaning up snow and the, picking it up and hauling it off in the downtown area. We haven't had to do like the huge productions like we've done in years past where you're out there at one or two or three in the morning and then you've got these giant mountains of snow and the big conveyor thing. We haven't had those snows, but we have picked it up and hauled it off. And we tried to include some all-season procedures. It goes to the lot on the east side of Second Street, Chestnut. It's property that I think we picked up or was donated in part by going backward tire town. And we've used it, we've put our granite seal chips in there. That's where the snow goes. So, that's in here. We try to avoid doing that, it's an expensive operation. So, we ask our guys to kind of double down and push the snow out of the way if at all possible and then have the next ship try to haul it off rather than the all-night thing we've done in the past. The other thing that we're trying to continue, started the person's predecessor, Ed Davis, who did not like having the contractors come and plow the residential areas and stuff. We will strive to have our forces do residential snow plowing if the storm permits. We just won't say. Okay, we're down plowing the snow roads, what's called contractors. We'll try to get our forces back in the residential areas and it saves time and considerably less expensive. But we do have contractor resources that allow us to, to stay caught up. The storms are, what we've seen, we're confident we can try to continue our streak of minimal contractor use.
Did we have minimal contractor use last year? I know we, we had a, I mean, the snow wasn't, there weren't great amounts, but we had like six snow storms, wasn't?
I don't, hopefully called our contractors out last year.
Okay, yeah, I just, yeah, I just wondered.
And the equipment that the commission has provided us to use is all current modern stuff, so it's, it's in decent shape and that makes a world of difference too. Try to keep it good shape, try to have spare parts on hand. We've been pretty good, able to mix and match amongst our neighbors if something breaks or we need a part that we can't get at two in the morning, usually somebody will have it and we'll, we'll figure out a way to get it. We involve the engineering staff to monitor our performance of our crews as well as if we have contracts, no removal crews out. We make sure that what equipment they have out and how many people, so when we get a bill, we can say that we verified that, yes, they did have these people and they did have this equipment.
For, for the operators, the city operators, I mean, they go through some type of training, don't they?
Right. Every year, there's a familiarization. We have a lot of new people have had the last two or three years. They have, they have a familiarization with, with the trucks and the routes. They're, they're assigned kind of a bigger primary assignment, if you will, is know where the snow routes are. You're on these routes, know where the things are you don't want to hit.
Right.
So, they will practice, I don't know if we've started it yet, but they will practice driving the truck with the plow, pretending they're snow to see where the bumps, the manholes or the.
Sure.
Weird pieces of curbing that poke out you don't want to hit. We try to avoid throwing slush up, that's a big problem. It feels really good, fling that slush up and get it going 15 or 20 feet. It's hard on mailboxes, fences, windows, siding, other people's cars.
They had more calls on that than anything else from the rest of them.
So, let's, let's rest with them. Our, our job is to plow the streets, not to fling the snow as far as possible, no matter how bad it feels to do that.
And we're not using sand anymore, right?
Trying to avoid, we do have some sand if we were to need it for something, but the, the sand, hopefully we're past the point where we have to make sand. It's hard, it's hard to clean up, it's not really as effective for what we, we like. And we've got solid order. We have about 600-plus tons in the dome right now, which generally would get us through a winter, but it's happiness, it's a full dome, and we're hoping to get that taken care of here in the next few weeks.
Okay. Any questions or comments for?
No, it looks good.
Who knows what's going to happen as far as the weather, but you've got to be prepared, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate the update.
The other two things that people love to hate us about is, we were probably going to plow in people's cars and plow in people's driveways. Typically, that happens about 10 minutes after they've shoveled them out. It's not, we don't seek them out to do that.
Right.
It just seems like it happens.
Can't be helped. Really can't be helped.
And the other is the city does have an ordinance, says you have to clear your sidewalk.
Right. And so, that affects the business people downtown, for instance, right? They've got to clear their sidewalks, right?
So, those are, those are the rules, or the expectations, you know, that the commission has set in our ordinances for that.
Okay. Now, the schools, they, they have their own equipment, right, for their parking lots and everything, the schools.
Yes, sir. We plow the streets and the, if it's on the street, we will plow around the school to do it. They tend to err lately on the sight of not opening unless they run out of snow days, which really helps us.
That, that's true.
Years and years ago, it was, there was, there was a lot of coordination to try to get the schools plowed before the kids came back, but the last few years, they tend to err on staying closed.
That is, that is the trend. Any other questions for Mr. McDonald? Thanks for the update on the snow and ice policy. See what happens as far as, as far as what happens with the weather. I think that's the last topic for today's study session, so I'm going to ask first, Paul, do you have anything before I go to the others?
Just a quick note. It seems like forever ago now that Camp Leavenworth passed, but it wasn't that long ago. Taylor and I had a post-mortem, if you will, with O'Neal today, this afternoon, and covered a lot of stuff. At some point, we're going to, we'll get together with the commission.
It'd be great.
A couple of things you'll see in the interim. We got the first look at a community survey that they're going to send out. It's going to start off with, did you attend? And if you click yes, you'll get a certain set of questions. If you click no, it'll be, you know, essentially, you know, why didn't you, you know, did you not hear about it, you know, were you busy? That kind of stuff. To try to get even more feedback, we have some really good feedback from all the vendors who do this for a living, the food people, the entertainment people that were sort of digesting. O'Neal has a lot of really good ideas. And, you know, if there was any suspense, we do plan on doing it again next year and continuing it into the future and making it as, as, as much of what the people of the city want to see. So, the survey, maybe in the next week or two, will go out. Social media, we're going to contact FMWR and make sure that it goes out, you know, see what the Ford families felt. Did they come? Did they not come? And stuff like that. So, it was a really good meeting. They've created a drone video of the festival that's really neat.
Oh, that's cool.
A short version and a long version, and we'll use that for sponsor packets. Our sponsorship numbers were a little bit lower than we expected, but it was the first year, no sponsors really knew it to. So, now when we go to them, we'll lead with the video, we'll also use that for some of the. Our sponsorship numbers were a little bit lower than we expected, but it was the first year, no sponsors really knew it to. So now when we go to them, we'll lead with the video, we'll also use that for some award submissions, we'll put it eventually on the city's social media sites, CBB sites, and use that video to get people a really a feel of what the festival was if they weren't able to attend the first year. So more to come on that, but just wanted to let the commission know that we're continuing to work on it, last year's, and then look forward to next year's. We'll try to set a date here, probably in the next month or two. Same exact time of year, we're kind of shifting between, the, the third weekend in September falls really early next year, it's like the 18th, how the days fall, so we're looking at one of those two dates, and we're kind of looking at some surrounding events to see what they're going to do, and then we'll pick the date.
Good. So it's got to be planned a year ahead.
That's absolutely right.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good. That sounds great.
Thanks for the update on the festival parade. Will somebody come and talk to us, maybe?
They should be here next week on the 22nd. Is Diane Smith coming back?
Quick update on the veteran state parade.
They're coming for the proclamation, so she'll probably have some.
Yes, so next week.
Who's that, Diane's?
Smith, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be good, just to hear about that, because that's coming up, what, in about three weeks? Two weeks, three weeks?
Yeah, three weeks.
Richard Vatter, do you have anything?
Just a public service announcement, tomorrow is early voting. We have seven people running for the city commission. I don't know how many for the school board, but we work hard, the candidates all are working really hard, and I think they had a really good forum last week, which is televised. And like I said, they all work hard, and, and it's kind of disheartening when there's a low voter turnout. So I hope that everybody gets out and votes early for the day of, which is a fit. So, thank you.
The only thing that I have is just a reminder to our military retirees in our community, the Fort Leavenworth Retiree Appreciation Day and Health Fair is coming up on Saturday, October 26, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Lewis and Clark Center, which is the CGSC building on Fort Leavenworth. And I've been going the last couple of years, and small group workshops, flu shots, free flu shots, and the VA and service organizations are represented there too. And there's, there's, if people need to get their ID cards kind of updated, that'll be a, that service will be available too. So I just wanted to give a little.
What was the location again?
It's at Lewis and Clark Center, which is the CGSC building on Fort Leavenworth. And this is October 26th, and this is the 55th year, annual, yeah, 55 years we've been having this, or Fort Leavenworth's been having the Retiree Appreciation Day. So that's all I have. If there's nothing else, that concludes our study session.